All right, I'd like to remind everybody that this is a work session of the board. This is not a regular township board meeting. This is for candid discussion between the board members. Let's go ahead and start with roll call. Are you there, Mr. Nordine?
Looks like one of us is muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, now I can hear you.
Okay, I, just to clear, so I muted myself, I'm in my office, my phone started ringing right next to me. So to prevent that, when I'm not talking, I was planning on muting, but then it didn't let me pop back on, or didn't let me unmute myself.
Yeah, I've got it turned off for people to be able to unmute themselves.
Okay, I'll try to not mute myself much, but with being in my office, you know, if someone comes to the window, I guess we'll see how it goes. If I have to relocate, I can. Okay, roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Nordine here. Mr. Byer.
Here.
Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Ms. McGuire.
Here.
Mr. Gasky. Here. Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Weed.
Here. All right, first on the list here is scheduling a work session to discuss the fees for utilities and IT services.
All right, so this is a direct follow-up from the discussion at the regular board meeting on the 24th Monday of this week. And so what was, based on the, on the board's discussion, it was, thought that we could bring this back to gauge availability, to be able to have a work session, to discuss the fees for the utilities and information technology services, RFP. Next week is going to be very difficult with the North American Space Summit. Was trying to be able to gauge availability for the week after that, which is Labor Day. And again, I know a lot of people are going to have travel plans for the Labor Day holiday. So again, that week of the 7th, which is really Tuesday, the 8th, it's that Tuesday through Friday, and then the week after that would be the 14th through the 18th, to see if there is a availability. I will tell you that the 14th is a board meeting, of course. So I don't know if the, if the township board would, you know, we haven't, we have not been doing pre-board work sessions prior to the virtual meetings. However, the Friday before the 14th is the 11th, and typically, we would have a pre-board work session on the 11th at 9:00 a.m. that Friday. And I was gonna throw that out as a potential availability for a work session at 9:00 a.m. on the 11th. That is Patriots' Day. And so there will be a service at the Veterans Memorial Park. And so instead of maybe 9:00 a.m., we could do it after that, potentially 9:30 or 10:00 a.m. I just, it depends on the availability of the board members.
So is everybody available on the 11th?
I would be available. Ten or after.
Yes, I am.
I am available. I'm available between 1:00 and 4:00.
Is this going to be a Zoom meeting also?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, the governor's orders do not look like they are going to be relaxed. I don't know. I, we, what I guess we would do is plan for a Zoom meeting. And if we could have a, an in-person meeting, then we would be able to switch it to an in-person meeting on the 11th.
I, I could be available.
Mr. Gasky?
Anytime.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I can barely hear you.
Anytime.
Okay.
And, and that work session's going to be for the utilities and the IT services?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a full work session? I mean, if the board thinks we do, I'm totally fine with that. I just wasn't sure if we thought we needed a full work session to discuss that, or?
I think apparently that we do, because there seems to be some sort of confusion from based on previous work sessions, that, you know, we thought we had everything hammered out, and now all of a sudden, there's questions with that.
Are you talking about the, the utilities or the IT?
I think for both.
Okay, okay.
We haven't had a previous work session regarding the utilities contract.
For utilities, we, for fees of utilities, we have to discuss.
I'm sorry, for the IT contractors, I'm sorry.
So I make a motion that we schedule a work session for September 11th at 1:00 p.m. either via Zoom or at the Township Library, depending on state-level circumstance.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Weed, support by Mr. Palmer. Roll call?
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Mr. Nordine, yes, Mr. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Ms. McGuire.
Yes.
Mr. Gasky.
Yes.
Mr. Weed.
Yes, motion's passed. Resignation of the Township Superintendent.
All right, so you see my letter in the board packet, that it has been my pleasure to serve as the superintendent of the Charter Township of Ascotis since the 1st of June 2018. I'm resigning, and I would be available to help bolster the transition efforts for a new Township Superintendent, as well as serve as somewhat of a transition for new members of the Township Board of Trustees. And with that in mind, I would be able to serve in my current capacity through the 30th of November 2020. And if the board would be able to get a Township Superintendent, you know, prior to that, onboard and fully transitioned, then, you know, I could, I could, I could leave sooner.
Any comments?
Whether we're going to have a work session to seek the replacement, or whatever, however we're going to proceed from here.
So we're discussing today.
Okay, well, I see it on the list, so he's reread his resignation. What do we want, what are we people thinking? We've got a job posting to, to make.
Well, the first thing, we, we've got those listed to discuss after this subject for the resignation. So as far as anything specific on this resignation, are there any comments?
I would just say that it's with very deep regrets that we, that we have this resignation in the first place. And I think we will need Mr. Schaefer to say on, I appreciate his staying on that, that length of time to November 30th. I think we'll need that, at least that amount of time to get everything in place here that needs to be done.
Hey, I make a motion that we accept the resignation of the Ascotis Township Superintendent, Mr. David Schaefer.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Weed, support by Mr. Byer. Roll call?
Mr. Gasky.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Mr. Nordine, yes, Mr. Byer.
Yep.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Ms. McGuire.
Yes.
Mr. Weed.
Yes, the motion is passed. I am very regretful that this resignation has come. I am very happy for you moving on to bigger and better things. You've been a godsend to this township, and I will truly miss the support you've given to this community.
Thank you.
All right, next item, job description to be posted for Township Superintendent position.
All right, so what I have in the packet is very similar information that the Township Board received after the previous Township Superintendent resigned, to be able to set up this process. Obviously, this Township Board is familiar with the process, because they went through this process a little over two years ago. And so what this does is this gives the recruitment guidelines for selecting a local government administrator. And this is based on ICMA, or the International City Managers Association. Obviously, there, it isn't the entire packet of information. I have in here, number eight, the selection process. Give some guidance as far as how that's going to go with the selection. The interview goes through all of that. Obviously, later on, it comes into number nine, as far as the negotiating process. And then number 10 is the transition process. So a lot of this was what helped guide the process to onboard a new superintendent. And I would imagine that the Township Board would want to be able to follow a very similar process as was used before. I have in, right behind that document, the Township Superintendent job description. And what you'll see in there is that that was updated August of 1996. Right after that is the page 15 in your packet, is the exact same ad or advertisement that was put out on the different job websites. So for example, was posted by MTA, was posted by ICMA. It was posted by the Strategic Government Resources. And so those typically do not post the entirety of the job description. The ad that you see on page 15 is the previous one. So what I'm trying to understand here is, you know, get thoughts from the board. Obviously, you have been through the process. I don't know if there are things that you would want to do differently this time, follow a very similar process for posting the Township Superintendent position. And the first bit on here is obviously the, the job description. I would not envision posting the one from 1996 on the sites. I would propose that we modify page 15 that it's posted. I would also put on there a link to the website that shows, within our Government Administration tab, within the website, it details out all of the responsibilities associated with the Township Superintendent, based on the MCL reference. And so that's one of the first things that when I was looking at the position, obviously, I went to that website, and I wanted to be able to see all of the different duties associated with the Township Superintendent. So kind of look for, for board feedback, now that you've been through the process. If you would want to do something similar, something different with posting the Township Superintendent position.
The add that's on page 15 that we're looking at here in the pack, I think is, I think is still valid, with the exception of a couple tweaks, like to whom the cover letters resumes would need to be sent to. The name of Mr. Stalker would need to change. The, I, I think everything in here, maybe a double check of full-time and regular, part-time employees, need to be verified to see whether that's still true today. I don't know if there's been any change at this exact moment, whether there's one down or not. The, and as far as the salary range, I think that that's probably still valid, even though we finally ended up approving a different, a different high-end salary for you, Mr. Schaefer. So, so yeah, I think that is basically the right thing.
Okay, the framework.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, exactly.
As, as Mr. Stalker, you know, served as the kind of lead on this process, I obviously would be.
Can we stop? I just want to make a point here. I know I misspoke at the very beginning of this meeting, said it's a work session, but this is a special board meeting. It says it right on the screen there, that it's a special board meeting. It was scheduled as a special board meeting. I know how this works here. So just because I said it was a work session and misspoke about it, does not make this not a special board meeting. So let's just end that right there, and let's continue on with the important discussion we need to have to progress forward. Thank you, go ahead, Mr. Schaefer.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what just happened.
Because there's a chat going on in here from Jamie McGuire.
Oh, oh, I see. I see.
Okay, so I mean, I would be willing to serve as that point person, be able to accept the applications, compile all that, be the, you know, the lead throughout this process to help, you know, bolster the transition efforts to a new superintendent.
Okay, so regarding the job description to be posted for the Township Superintendent position, does anybody have any comments for that?
My only comment, and I recognize this kind of jumps ahead to the next topic on the agenda, but it is in here in the job description, and I'm not going to beat this to death, is the anticipated salary range. My thoughts haven't changed much since we went through this all before, so I don't, I'm not going to belabor the point. But I just wanted to get that out there. Other than that, I'm good with the whole job description and the posting. And I just want to say at the beginning of all this, I thought last time, we as a board worked well together, and to, to go through this process resulted unanimously, and Mr. Schaefer, I look forward to us being able to do that again. We worked quite well together during this process last time, so look forward to that again.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Nordine. I think we can, we can manage with this. I think what's listed here is appropriate with some minor changes in wording, as Mr. Cummings pointed out. So I think, I think what's, what's provided to us here is reasonable to post for this position.
Aaron, question. Are we, are we just discussing one C? Or are we kind of sliding into letter D also? Still on C?
No, we're only discussing item C, which is the job description.
Okay, good.
Any further comments?
Last time, we got a lot of applications, which I was pleased with. And then it was decided, I forget how it was decided, that we would vote on the various applications that we had received through the mail or email. And you correct me if I'm wrong, you wanted us, you being Aaron, wanted us to vote for our top two candidates, two was it each? And then the top five would be called to Ascotis for interviews. And then primarily because of me, we added six, a six, and that would be Mr. Schaefer, who seemed very, very enthusiastic about coming to Ascotis. I, I didn't add my voice to saying, you know, with great regrets, because I, I don't know why he's leaving, and then maybe this is not the place to do that. But I am kind of disappointed and surprised, he only gave us 26 months from the enthusiasm that he expressed during the interview process. But that's, I guess, for another time. Are we going to do the same thing as far as picking five or six top candidates? Because that was kind of, as I understood, that that was kind of an Ascotis contribution to the process, not in printed form from the MTA or anything like that. So are we going to pick a number that we would ask to come here for interviews? Hello?
It's up to the board to decide. I was good with how the process worked the last time, I thought it was.
Me too.
Done very well.
Yeah.
I would, I would say, I would say that would.
Each person was asked to vote for their top two choices, is that right?
I don't remember if it was top two or not, but everything you said was pretty close.
Yeah, my recollection is we ranked them, I think all of them or close to all of them. And then computed the rankings of each individual board member to result in a ultimate tally. And then as for whether we have five or six for, for interviews, I think wherever there's a clear demarcation, you know, I think the board could probably agree. I mean, we said five, but then, like to Mr. Byer's point, the board agreed to do six, because there is a clear, in my recollection, you know, spacing between, we, we thought these were good for interviews and these weren't. So I don't think that's to be a hard and fast number that we bring here.
Okay.
I agree with you completely, John. That's exactly my recollection as well.
Yeah, I agree, that was, that was a procedure. Although today, what we're talking about right now is posting the job description. I think, I think those things were determined after it was posted, and we had the number of applicants that responded. So I think, I think that's something that we can determine after this, this position is posted, and we have the applications in hand, we can, we can make a determination on that. Hopefully, we will get a good number of applicants, as we did last time. So we have to kind of whittle it down to a, to a specific number. But I don't think we can really make a statement on that or a decision until we actually see what, what results from this posting.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, Bill. I do, I just was curious. You know, we're talking about following a procedure that we used before that seemed to work well for us, and I guess I was stretching it a little bit further about how we, as a group of seven, were going to handle the applications and so forth. But perhaps that was jumping ahead a little bit.
No, that's all right, I totally understand, Mr. Byer, that, Jim, that's, you know, something was certainly have to take into consideration. It's just, you know, at this point, we, you know, when you don't have an idea of how many, you know, I remember last time, we were concerned whether or not we'd get, you know, enough applicants to look at. And as it turned out, we, we had a good number, and, and thanks to you, you suggested increasing it to six, and we ended up being able to get Mr. Schaefer, which was, which was a, a great thing that, thanks, thanks to you for making that suggestion, that we, we ended up with that. So perhaps in the, in this next go-around, when it comes to that point, we'll, we'll want to make that number six instead of, you know, five. So just, but I think we can, we can deal with that, once we, once we get the applications in hand.
I think board members might remember, the reason I pushed for six is because Mr. Stalker was rather loud and clear, indicating that we had a guy from Brooklyn, Ohio, that really sounded good, really sounded interested at that time. Talked about how he spent every 4th of July in this town, had in-laws here, so forth. And, you know, after hearing that a couple of times from Bob Stalker, my comment was, what the heck, why don't we add him, you know? But that, that's what's behind that. I, I'm not in love with the number six. It was because of the phone reports that, that Bob gave us, not just me, of, you know, the many phone calls and expressions of interest from the person that became number six.
Okay, so the board members seem to be good with the process we worked last time, right?
I agree.
Okay, so back to the job description portion of this. Is there any further discussion regarding that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the job description to be posted for the Township Superintendent position with a few changes that were mentioned.
Support.
Motion by Ms. McGuire, support by Mr. Palmer. Roll call?
Ms. McGuire.
Yes.
Mr. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Mr. Nordine, yes, Mr. Gasky.
Yes.
Mr. Weed.
Yes, motion's passed. Okay, now the rate of pay to be posted. Anybody have anything regarding the pay?
I think the $80,000 low end is probably not commensurate with the work and, and the level of skill that we're looking for in an individual to assume this position.
I agree with that.
I would agree with that also. I would, I would prefer to see the range a little tighter on that, perhaps 90 to 100.
I think it's fine where it's at, as long as the job description stays and duties in the resolutions stay the same for the superintendent.
What do you mean by fine where it's at?
The 80 to 100,000.
Any other comments?
If I were the person that said, let's leave it where it's at, what I would mean is just a refresher for me of what we're paying now. And I'm thinking 95 or 90.
Yeah, I came in at 90, and there was an agreement that if I pass six months pro- And there was an agreement that if I pass six months probation, it will go to 93. And so that's, you know, I passed six months probation. I went to 93. And then I'm at 96 after, you know, another two years of 2% increases.
Well, you maybe have, Dave, more experience than the rest of us. I'm going to repeat what I said earlier. I have no idea why you're leaving. But if it's because of the pay, and I think it was Aaron said, moving on to bigger and better things. I don't know what that is. But is 95 or 96 in the ballpark? Or are you moving because it's not in the ballpark? You know, I'm confused.
I think regardless of that, we have to set the pay. We've been given charts of what pay is at across the country in related municipalities. So all the data's been provided to us to determine what is an appropriate pay.
Yes, I have that information. I've seen it. I've looked at it. But I still think...
If you're looking for some sort of personal thing from Mr. Schaefer, maybe that should be done in a private conversation.
That's fair. That's fair.
Well, I think what we learned from the last time is that we weren't able to get somewhat of Mr. Schaefer's caliber at 80,000. So that was a reason that I suggested we close that range to 90 to 100 and go from there. That, I mean, that...
If you want full candor here from me, when I applied for the position, I noted on my application I would be looking at the upper end of that range. I took a pay cut to come up here as far as salary comes. And that's because I wanted to come up here. I was making more money in Brooklyn, Ohio than coming up here. And so when I noted that I wanted the higher end of the range, when we started negotiations, I was starting at $80,000 and I had to prove my case that I needed, you know, more than that to move up here. So somebody with enough experience to be able to do the job you want, you're going to be looking at that very high end of, towards the six figures. And that's just being very honest and candid about this situation.
I agree with that. And I think 90 is probably a little low.
Okay, Dave, thank you.
You're welcome.
Perhaps we should expand that range then a little bit. I hesitate to have a huge range of salary options in there. But perhaps, you know, move it up to 95 to 110, somewhere in that area.
I actually think that's appropriate.
I think it's also possible that maybe the limit, while we certainly obviously need one and there is a limit to how much we can afford to pay, possibly we can consider a qualifying statement. You know, let's say the, you know, the 80 or the 90,000 to 100, 110,000, if that's the case, comma, you know, commensurate with the experience. And that leaves us the ability to respond to what we get in applicants, which we clearly don't know at this moment.
I make a motion that we have the rate of pay posted for the township superintendent to be from 95,000 to 110,000.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Weed, support from Mr. Palmer. Roll call.
Mr. Nordine, no. Mr. Gasky?
Yes.
Ms. McGuire?
No.
Mr. Byer?
No.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Weed?
Yes, motion's passed. All right, the costs associated with posting the position.
Right. As I mentioned last time, this position was posted on several different job boards. Obviously, ICMA, Strategic Government Resources, MTA. Those are the specific ones where this position was posted last time. I would, you know, suggest that the posting be done the same way on those job boards. If there are more costs or different job boards that we post, I will certainly keep the township board apprised on that. I do not anticipate coming anywhere close to the purchasing limit to be able to post the, for the job postings. But wanted to be clear with the township board that the costs associated with this, obviously, if we build against the 101, 172, which is the superintendent's budget, and the costs that were incurred last time will be very similar to the cost that's incurred this time. I just, I wanted to be able to preface that. I won't be spending over $10,000 to do it. But I will be, you know, incurring those costs. And if the township board, for some reason, didn't want to do that or had preference on where else it is posted specifically, I would gladly take that input.
Does anybody have any input for that?
Well, if I could just ask a question just out of, just pure curiosity, Dave, which site was it that you found this application? We had it posted before.
Strategic Government Resources.
Okay. Then I would make a motion that we approve the costs associated with the superintendent position for postings and allow that to be done by Mr. Schaefer.
I support.
Motion by Mr. Palmer, support from Mr. Cummings.
Before we vote, are we going to go for all three that are mentioned here? MTA, ICMA, and Strategic Government Resources? Or just the latter?
All three would be my motion.
Do we have the fourth as GovHRUSA? Is that a, is that a fourth?
I've been trying to compile all the different postings. These are the three I got. And I'm trying to be able to see where else it was posted last time. And it would be to mimic that wherever it was posted last time. Because obviously, you guys did get a lot of good applicants.
Okay.
And I would say whatever postings Mr. Schaefer can find, as long as it stays under his budget amount, would be fine.
And I agree with that from the motion. It's my support stance.
Roll call.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Nordine, yes. Mr. Gasky?
Yes.
Ms. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Mr. Weed?
Yes, motion's passed. Do the board members have anything else to address with this? All right, then we go into the public comment portion of this meeting. There's a four-minute time limit. Please make sure that if you have two devices going with sound, make sure you turn off one of them. You can only have one device with sound so that we don't get feedback. And please introduce yourself. For those who are online, please use the raise hand function near your name to let me know that you want to speak. For those who are on the phone, I am going to unmute, which I have asked all to unmute. So you're going to have to do the phone function. Sure, it's probably still star six like the last time to be able to unmute. Anybody have public comment? There's also the chat box. If you're online, you can type your comments in there. Okay, seeing none, we'll go into board comments. Does anybody have anything?
Well, I would just like to say that I'm disappointed that it has come to this, that we're losing a good man here in OSCota Township, Mr. Schaefer. And I deeply regret his leaving.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I want to concur and add that I think it's through Mr. Schaefer's leadership that we've actually made great strides in so many areas never previously envisioned. The EIC is largely because of Mr. Schaefer. Place in Maine and his relationship there permitted us to find out and learn and get information from other people that we otherwise have never previously contacted. I just think that he's been an invaluable resource and, in my opinion, was worth far more than his salary. I think we've gotten the more than, more than what we have paid him in value. And I will miss working with you, Dave.
Thank you, Tim. I appreciate that.
Just one other note, Dave. You've paid your dues at the Lions Club through December, but we don't give refunds.
I understand. That needs to be a, you know, a fair and equitable policy. So I understand. I would like to say that, you know, whoever comes into this position next is going to have the benefit as, you know, Tim alluded there. We are working to incorporate the strategic plan into the master plan. We have a very good chunk done on the MEDC's redevelopment-ready community certification. And, you know, we'll be able to, the new person will be able to see that over the finish line to get the community certified. And what that's been able to enable is an economic development strategy, a downtown redevelopment strategy, a community branding and marketing strategy. Form-based code has been linked to that. And we're still, you know, updating our zoning to be more developer-friendly. So there's a lot of steps and goals and objectives that the new superintendent will be able to follow. And obviously, you know, that new superintendent's going to have specific initiatives, be able to identify opportunities for improvement and work towards that while still following that plan. And I think that, you know, it's important for the township board members to know, you know, the incumbents and as well as the potential new faces on the board. I'm compiling, I don't know how else to do it, but really compile these massive humongous binders with the master plan and the strategic plan and all the other strategies associated with it. And, you know, it's my understanding that basically the new board members would be elected. I will have binders ready to go. When they are sworn in, I can at least try to give them somewhat of a transition and a baseline of everything that's contained into the massive binder to help bolster that transition. And obviously, hopefully, be able to go over that with the new superintendent and provide that transition. I will have much more information on the process at the meeting on the 14th of September is the next regularly scheduled board meeting. And there are six board meetings left between now and the end of November. And so I plan on having a standard update at each one of those meetings on where we are in the process, what's going on with the process. And if the board members, as we go through, have questions on that, please feel free to reach out to me and I can keep you apprised of what's going on.
I want to say before we're done, Dave, thank you for your work and service to the community, first of all. And second, you're welcome. And second of all, I hope, and I'm happy for and I'm hopeful for your new situation for you and your family. I hope it works out well.
Thank you.
Any other board comments?
Well, I guess I have gotten a lot of phone calls since Tuesday. And one of the things that I think needs to be differentiated and, you know, we're in a public setting here is that my resignation was completely separate from the discussion on, at the 2021 Budget Work Session Number Four as far as the proposed changes in the 2021 appropriations. I had some people calling that were confused, that linked both of the proposed changes as part of my resignation letter. And that is not the case. The differentiation as far as the proposal for a financial professional has nothing to do with my resignation. What it does have to do with is the language in the 2019 audit. And it's simply in the management letter, the second to the last page of Page 72 of a Page 73 document that's out on the website. And in there, it says specific language as far as an example of where the township relies on the auditor as a control for producing reliable financial statements is in the excessive number of adjusting journal entries proposed during the audit. By accounts not being adjusted monthly, the financial records provided to the board each month are not an accurate reflection of the township standings. This then adds substantial time and testing during the audit to determine accurate balances. We believe that a review and evaluation of the transactions with proper, monthly, and yearly closing procedures being performed would expedite the year-end closing process, reducing audit time and fees. That's basically what it has to do with. And just so the other board members understand the working environment that I have right now. Had a conversation with the treasurer yesterday late afternoon, who came into my office and told me I better stay out of it as far as the proposal of a financial professional and that that financial professional wouldn't necessitate a full-time position and that the treasurer would not relinquish duties associated with the performance of any financial functions. And so I was not provided with the information, was also told by treasurer yesterday that I'm in violation of a code of ethics, that I should not be talking about this. So just want the board to understand the working environment I currently have at Township Hall.
Thank you for that.
That is, that is highly disappointing. Apparently, the sanctity of the treasurer's office shall not be passed.
My turn, Tim. My turn. I also had a conversation with Mr. Schaefer in my office last week, and he told me that had he known two years ago that when he was interviewing for this job, that he, that four people on this board weren't going to get re-elected in November, he never would have taken this job.
I might tell you as to which side of the accounting principles he's leaning toward, don't Jamie, wouldn't it?
So I thank you for the explanation, Mr. Schaefer.
And there was more to the conversation than Dave is telling, but again, this is a public special board meeting, so I'd be happy to discuss it with anybody.
You've been a godsend to the township. Like I said before, you have made huge strides for this township to go in a positive direction. Major changes in just the last two years, significantly far more productivity than we received in the years prior that I've served on this board. Kevin Bellevo had made a post on here in this meeting in the chat that says, please echo your comments about Dave's tenure with Ask Go to Township for myself and Asable Township. Best of luck to him. Thank you for that from Mr. Bellevo. It's disappointing that you're being subjected to that issue.
Hang on, I have another comment. Aaron, I have another comment. What I did, I would love to. I printed off the code of ethics for the superintendents, and what I pointed out to Dave Schaefer was that under number seven, that it says that the superintendent needs to stay out of the politics with the township, with the township. He needs to stay out of it, and he isn't staying out of it. He also asked for information on the last day that people were running for office and then met with you at 4:05. The superintendent is supposed to be unbiased and stay out of it. If anybody would love a copy of the ethics, I would be happy to provide that to you. Actually, I was going to plan on providing that to you at the next regular board meeting so that more people would be involved in that meeting. So, and the information that I outlined to Dave is that, not that I wasn't going to, well, I did say I wasn't going to, because by charter, by charter, you cannot diminish the duties or the responsibilities of the clerk or treasurer's office. And you can't reduce their pay without written consent unless it's within that term. The next term you can, but this term you cannot do that without written permission. Those are the things that I was outlining to Dave, and I would be happy to give that stuff to all of the board members. And again, I planned on doing that at the next regular meeting when there was more information provided by Mr. Schaefer to do so.
I don't see how me going to the Township Hall at 4:05 that day is Dave interfering with politics. That's an assumption without any facts that you just put out there?
I have, okay.
I'm sorry. Didn't you just press for your time? And the proposal made by Mr. Schaefer of the changes in the positions I find to be appropriate for the township as a whole. It's about saving money and becoming more efficient. It's the changes that I would have made had I become treasurer. So I think that it doesn't have anything to do with politics. It has to do with what's the best way to make the township function. And that is, you know, if we can save money and become more productive, then that's the option that we should go with. Having a financial manager would be critical to making sure that our finances are done properly, because clearly with major mistakes in our audit, they're not being done properly. We get somebody in here who knows what they're doing. Instead of hearing from a treasurer saying, well, I'm not a CPA, I'm not this, I'm not that, but then acting like all of the discrepancies coming in is not the fault of the chief fiscal officer of the township. So if you're not the CPA, if you're not all of these things, and yet we still have financial problems, then the best option is to get a financial manager in here and who can handle it. We can save money while doing it. The audits become much easier to contend with. So I think process improvements should be definitely something the board has got to consider seriously so that we can move forward in what is fair and proper for the community and the township government as a whole. I am going to continue on to say thank you, Mr. Schaefer, for the dedication you put in, the huge amount of overtime that you put in to this township. I really appreciate it. Need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us.